From Monday, November eighteenth, if we can afford an order. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Charles, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. Uh, we've added to the agenda, um, first of which is, uh, discussion on the board and expanding cannabis retail establishments and set a public hearing date of December eleventh or eighteenth at seven thirty P M. at the Canadian Center. Uh, is there a motion to add that as item eight?
Some.
And a second? Uh, how much of questions at this point? Let me try your minds. Fall in favor.
Aye.
Selectman Federici, on the line?
Aye, I'm here. Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, also, we have one other addition. Um, it should probably be on Board Pack by now. And that is on their appointments and resignations. Uh, we received the, uh, application from Peter Palumbo for the, uh, Guilford Housing Authority to fill a vacancy. Um, and, uh, is there a motion to put him in as nine point three?
Oh. Second.
Any comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, item two, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Sorry, I don't want to say. Let's move on to item three, and that's the approval of minutes. The, uh, November fourth, twenty twenty-four minutes. Um, is there a motion? And a second?
Seconds.
Okay, um, nope. Any comments, questions, suggested changes? Hearing done. Um, I'll try your minds. Uh, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you. Objection. Um, item four. Mary Jane, Finance Director. Good morning, Mary Jane.
Good morning.
And how are you today?
Good. Got a busy day ahead of us today.
Yes, we do.
We'll try to make this part of it quicker. Um, like to start with revenues. Uh, at the end of October, we are thirty-three percent through our year. Um, our revenue is slightly down from last year, fifty-three point six compared to fifty-four point nine. But if you remember, we did adjust a lot of the budgets, so that makes up for, for the difference.
To make them more realistic.
In, in that. Um, so, uh, you know, we, we've had some revenue in from the selectmen again.
Uh, we, we, we love, we love to, we love to sell those products.
Um, other than that, uh, golf, you'll note, is at sixty percent, um, having another, um, very good year, um, as well as some of the other departments, but, um, everyone seems to be in line, uh, to where they should be at this point.
And with the weather, I suspect golf will continue to.
Yes.
Through November. In a short-sleeved shirt, working in my yard yesterday on November seventeen.
I know, me too. Crazy.
Think there's something to this global warming stuff?
I'm going to Florida next week just to cool down.
Any other, uh, any other questions or comments on, uh, revenues? Good. Let's move on, please.
All right. Uh, similar story with expenditures. On this side, we are up a little higher from, um, last year overall, thirty-eight percent compared to thirty-six point three percent this time, um, last year. Um, so we have a, a, a couple line items I wanted to mention. Um, one is communications. Uh, they are forty-two percent compared to thirty-three where we should be. That's a timing issue. We have a large service contract that goes out, um, early in the year, which, um, makes that higher. Um, also golf, you'll see we did six, two miles in our revenue and fifty-two percent out, um, on our expenditures. Um, but that, you know, obviously makes sense. Um, there'll be mint for a few months, assuming the weather cools down. And the, the only other item I wanted to mention, um, was capital in the capital. Um, but we do have, uh, a, a purchase order that's, uh, currently applied to capital, um, that, that should not be, will be moving that. So, um, that, that will not be overdrawn, um, at this point. That's.
Um, I noticed fire, uh, particularly as it relates to replacement salaries is only slightly above, uh, thirty-nine percent versus the thirty-three.
Yeah.
That's, that's a trend in the right direction.
Yes, we're hopefully managing that well. Um, the, keep in mind that the first six months of this, um, fiscal year, we still have ARPA money that we are applying against that. Once January comes, the ARPA money for any salary reimbursement ends. Um, so hopefully, um, we can try to manage that without that ARPA money.
Got it.
Second half of the year.
That's right. All right, uh, anybody else with any? Hearing done. MJ?
Use the right lane to take exit eleven for Derby and New Haven.
Where are we going?
Sorry about that.
All right.
Sorry about that.
Anything on, uh, warrants? It's unusual. Do we have questions here? Medical?
Uh, medical, um, we are, uh, had a relatively, uh, small, uh, month of October, one point oh three two compared to the one point oh nine that we expect each month. Obviously, we are still, um, our employees are still paying their deductibles, um, uh, until they, uh, complete that, then the town will be covering that. We, we have caught up to our stop-loss payments. If you remember, we were waiting for a credit back from July before we made any more payments. We are up to date there. Um, as far as stop-loss, we're at fourteen point five percent at, at the moment. Um, one point seven million dollars worth of claims over seventy-five thousand and two hundred and twenty covered, um, by, uh, the, the stop-loss insurance. We have twelve, um, members already reaching the seventy-five thousand dollar, um, threshold and four, uh, accounting for that two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And I'll just remind you that down at the bottom, we are tracking the new vision coverage, uh, since we have, um, that, you have the credit that hopefully will carry the vision, uh, for at least three years, uh, without any additional, um, cost to the town. So we are tracking that, so you can see where that stands.
Great. And, uh, you know, at the stop-loss, uh, expenses, uh, straightened out, we're.
You can go to the right lane and go.
Correct, and that's because, um, the first couple of months, we had some carryover from.
Well, you're supposed to be on the right lane.
The, um, surplus from the prior year kinda hit us a little bit the first couple of months in, in this year, so.
Anything further? Uh, or any other questions? Uh, pension are open? There's, I know you noticed it's in here for any questions or comments?
Yeah, it goes to the Board of Finance each month, so I get, now it's been showing up on the Board of Selectmen. But it's good for you to see where we stand, so.
And we've been enjoying some pretty healthy returns so far this year, right?
Yeah, we had a down month in October, but, uh, September was big.
But we're still up.
Yes, we are definitely still up.
Still, still up.
As I, as I always say at the pension meetings, it's a snapshot time, the date that I do that, so the very next day could be one day, you know, so. It's just how it works.
Anything else? Have a segue.
Yeah, yes, it follows through. Yes.
All right. Anything further from Mary Jane?
See you in a little bit.
See you later. All right, item five, Parking Recreation Director Pam here. Good morning, Pam.
Good morning. How's everybody?
Yeah.
So I'm back.
All right, five dot one.
Yes.
Take possible action on a request for special permission to have a horse carriage on the green.
I will mention, we were hoping that was gonna be a surprise. But we did need to get a.
Well, we'll see. We're sworn to secrecy.
Can we just read? We have, we have the reason.
Yes, yeah, we do. We do. Exactly. Uh, no, we don't. Um.
Does it involve a princess?
You wanna apply for that job?
It was just noticed, um, that there was never really, uh, a extravagant entrance. And so with, you know, behind the scenes talks, we thought it would be fun, rather than some, you know, just looming around the back of the stage.
Got it. Yeah, I, I love that.
Come out to the crowd. So we really thought it should be more spectacular.
And our friends at PD are fine?
Yes, they were, they just encouraged me to come here.
Great. Um, I am, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly in support of this. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
We'll have to make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Uh, further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Do you know what you're voting for?
Yeah, horse strong carriage.
You got to pack it, right?
Just say yes.
Just say yes, that's. Uh, those in the room?
Aye, aye.
That motion carries. Great. All right, uh, I got two. Remove to the table, take possible action on additional funding needed to upgrade vehicle purchase from a Ford. Uh, F three fifty to a Ford, F five fifty.
Right, so as you may remember, last time I was here, I, you had some questions for me that I could not answer. So since then, I, I, I do know that our fleet consists of four F five, F five fifties and three F three fifties. So at the time, I just wasn't clear as to what our fleet consisted of. So Tony and I met, I have him here as a backup for me in case you come up with some questions that I can't answer. Um, but in terms of hauling capacity, in terms of being able to haul the new entertainment stage, that is why we're requesting the five fifty. The entertainment stage is much heavier than anticipated, so the three foot, three fifty couldn't even, um, haul it. Um, so that is the reason why we're requesting, and certainly the five fifty in the future will also be more, you know, having that additional hauling, um, additional requirements for, say, you know, when you're thinking about Route eighty, going up to Route eighty, we wanna get the tractors off the road. And so certainly the five fifty will help be able to trailer the equipment that we have. And if I'm missing anything, please jump in.
How many three fifties and five fifties do we have?
Four F five fifties and three F three fifties.
The biggest note, it will be replacing a plow truck, and the plow truck holds four yards of material to go out in the roads and in the parking lot, so it's significant amount of weight, especially when it's wet, but.
And as you see, I do, um, we do have some additional monies left over in the silt drain that could help cover the additional costs as well as, um, changing our opinions on the irrigation, uh, air card that we feel we need some more research before we move forward, something like that.
I'm not sure if I remember, but did, did you say last time that this new truck will replace the, when you just said, is that truck gonna go to the waste transfer station then, or is that gonna be sold?
Uh, it's either gonna be auctioned off or it's gonna be repurposed because the, um, the bed of the truck is rotted out, but the chassis is still in good shape. We're at about the eleven-year mark for this, which we usually go twelve to fifteen, um, on our trucks. And our, um, our recycling truck is from two thousand and three. We use a repurposed chassis that we had, so we're basically doing a swap to give you the quickest answer.
Good, uh, purposeful reuse.
It's a recycling truck.
So we have a trash truck that's dedicated to trash, and we have a recycling truck. And the way that we dump our recycling, we can't use the same truck because we can't put the recycling.
The little truck that we got for the refuge, we had, that looked like it was the whole unit onto itself.
Hey, yeah, the strictly trash. Yeah, yeah.
And that was, that was a reuse of a, uh, an older vehicle. We put the recycling bin on the back, right?
Yep, yep.
So as far as the towing of the show, how many cars a year would you guess?
Definitely over, probably twenty-five or more.
And that's for our own use, not for other groups that we, somewhere.
As a mix.
It's a mix.
Majority of ours.
Majority of ours, and then, and I mean, that's a year for indefinitely.
What time do they, you know, you never appreciate how much.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember when the first one was blood, and then when we had to buy the second one, I was, wow, it was, blood wears out on the stage, but it gets a lot more interesting with it.
And this year, we're actually planning on, since the new entertainment stage came in, been trained on it a week ago, um, but we're planning on using both stages for the tree riding. It's gonna be on either side of the tree that's gonna be let up, so those stages can be used.
Just make sure it's only which side it's supposed to go on.
Yes.
We're all gonna be there, right?
Yes.
We're all gonna be there.
Same in his house.
Okay.
We can get you costumes.
You got the beard.
It's coming in. All right, um, any further questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing done. Let me try my, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, five dot three, discuss to take possible action to send two old senior buses to auction. Yep?
Yes, so these buses have been sitting in the yard, um, for many years, and Dave's at the point where he's like, let's, let's get moving. So they're going to auction. It's just going through the formal process of getting the board to approve.
That's real good. Just for, uh, a little background, uh, this week we've got, or last week, we've got the final documentation signed, uh, uh, paper for the funding for another senior bus from the state.
Fantastic.
So we're, 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 we're going on a replacement there.
So we're getting a new one. Are we trading in, or are we just adding, or I just don't want another vehicle sitting around for a couple?
These haven't been used in years.
I know these actually, you know, but the one that's coming in.
Will replace the oldest on the fleet.
And are we getting rid of that one? Are we auctioning that one? Some things, trading it in?
I think it will sit for a little bit, just, just like these have as a spare.
One of them is a spare, I guess.
They do get used for spare periodically.
You know, 'cause it's still ru, it's still running, but the life of it is, is getting older, so I think there's that grant process that you wanna stay ahead of it in terms of getting, you know, your, your buses in.
Let's put a, a clock on the spare.
We've, uh.
I mean, it's, the values go down too. I mean, like you said, it's still running. Obviously, we're not trading it in, but, you know, a year from now, it's gonna revert, that much less.
And there are occasions where.
Point where it's used.
Yeah, and there are occasions where you can use the extra one in addition to what's already out on, on the street.
That's right.
Some of the, some of the bigger trips. Um, great, all right. Um, and the thing to remember is this is largely funded through, uh, state D L T.
Right.
Grant funds. I think it's at eighty percent. We have a twenty percent now, so, uh, of course.
So this gotta be moved?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, move. Second?
Second.
Uh, any further commercial questions? Hearing done. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Yes.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Item five dot four, consider to take possible action on the replacement of the irrigation pump at Calvin School.
This is a fiscal twenty-five cap improvement project, and, um, Tony's been at it trying to get the, the amount of quotes necessary, and it's just been, uh, a very difficult thing. One company is recommending the person that we already got a quote from, and another company said the same thing, and then there's no response, so we wanted to move forward. It's, it's been very time-consuming to even meet out with these people, try to get quotes from them. We did get the Charles W. Harris Company provided a quote of sixteen thousand nine sixty. We'd like to move on it. The actual capital, um, project is for twenty-five, so we're then having a considerable savings there as well.
Great. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, any comments or questions? How long has the pump been down?
Since May.
Could've used a little less fall with the drought, huh?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
All right, uh, anything further? Uh, hearing done. Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Yes.
And those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Work when you can't get quotes and things like that.
You only have to solicit three. That's, you have to solicit three.
And then if we get responses, even if the responses are non-quote.
Right. All right, so we're. Up to twenty-five thousand, and then we have to go out the bit.
Yeah, that works.
See you this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, Town Engineer Janice Blazy. Uh, good morning, Janice.
Morning.
Uh, six dot one, is to review and approve cost overruns for Nut Plains, uh, Road Reconstruction Project. Um, Janice Williams?
Good morning. Um, Nut Plains Road's moving along. Um, we thought we were gonna take a break and finish the new intersection and hill in the spring, but the weather's been so good and the contractor jumped in, so. Uh, we've had some, uh, cost overruns on specific items in the projects, um, just due to, some of it was just, um, the bid documents didn't calculate the estimated quantities accurately. Um, one being the road excavation and subbase and, um, those items, we found out early on, once the contractor came on board and did his survey and layout for the project, that he felt that those items were sorely underestimated. So, um, with that one, we worked out a deal to re, redesign the pavement structure of, of the roadway, still being keeping with D O T's requirements, um, but to reuse some of the onsite material, which we had tested and found to be adequate for the subbase. And, uh, we, we were able to come up with a way to save us probably almost two hundred thousand dollars on what would have been specifically straight cost overruns, um, and brought that down to, uh, let's see what my notes are here. About thirty-four thousand dollars in, in cost overruns from what we estimated to be about two hundred and twelve based on the straight bid documents. Uh, so we started the project right there. Uh, moving ahead, we're still, uh, under the purchase order amount, but we're tallying up some changes and, you know, exceeded quantities, and the biggest one we have is the rock excavation. Um, there was a miss on how much rock we're gonna encounter in this project, not just in the hillside, which we sort of expected, but, um, although didn't quantify, um, but we found rock even in the trenches for the drainage, uh, throughout, even in some of the subbase in the middle of the project limits. So, um, it was a little surprising how much rock after having done uh, test borings and test pits during the design process. Um, so, you know, we're estimating that we could be around just under four hundred thousand dollars in cost overruns for our rock excavation. Um, the good thing is, is in our public, um, project authorization for the, you know, for the project, we do have these, uh, contingencies and incidentals to construction. Um, I forgot to pick that out, but I think I submitted it with my submission to you, um, which gives us, um, uh, four, five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, I believe, uh, in total. Um, you know, additional costs to the contract amount. Um, so I'm asking for you to authorize us to utilize that total amount. I'm hoping that we'll still be under that. Uh, right now, we're estimating about four sixty, but we may have some cost overruns also on the, um, the, the actual pavement itself, so, um, it's kind of a work in progress, but I wanted to get that authorization from you folks, uh, you know, ahead of, um, having to pay out the contractor, obviously.
Timing wise, we think, you know, I, I accidentally threw that in last week, and it is, and it's a big project. Uh, but anyway, we think we're gonna be done, and they're still gonna be making pavement, looks like.
So we expect to have, um, base course pavement done, uh, possibly the end of this week for the entirety of the project. Um, we've currently are just by the cemetery with, um, base course, and then from, uh, Nut Plains Park North, that's fully paved and curved currently, so that's pretty much complete with the need for just pavement markings and signage and turf establishment. So from the park down, uh, south, it's gonna be, um, basically a base course of pavement for the winter, I think. And we, they'll probably come back in the spring to do the final course unless they are able to line up till kind of come back again. Um, so, uh, which is, you know, we'll all be buttoned up and, you know, safe for the winter. Uh, so, and, and we'll have all the signage and pay, you know, even temporary pavement markings in that area, final pavement markings in the other area.
You are anticipating the plants closing in the early December, so.
Yes, yeah, so that's, you know, sometimes they'll push it out, especially since we're having such good weather, but I see the temperatures dropping, uh, starting this week, and I don't see them coming back again. So, you know, I, I'd ideally like to possibly wait till spring for the final course, but we'll see what the contractor's schedule looks like as he progresses. The rock excavation obviously slowed him down throughout the project. The anticipated stop, you know, completion was, um, I believe Thanksgiving for this project, um, but the rock ex just slowed things down, but he still made up a lot of time, and, you know, he decided to just go for with the, go for it with the, uh, dry, uh, intersection realignment part.
You're pretty happy with the, the construction company, Dorita?
Yeah, they've been good to work with. Yeah, they've been, you know, there's been some frustrations on both our sides, but, uh, that's typical. We've always been able to, you know, talk things out and come to a reasonable solution on how to approach something.
All right, uh, is there a motion to approve, uh, the, authorizing the entire use of the, uh, project, uh, cost as estimated by, or, or as guaranteed by D O T? Uh, so that's the additional five eighteen above the original contract costs.
I will make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Yes.
Those in the room?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, item seven, considering to take possible action to approve the transfer of forty-four Boston Street from the Guilford Savings Bank to the Guilford Foundation. Free not to terminate the nineteen ninety-seven agreement as amended due to this transfer. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
How are you, Jeff?
Good morning. I'm good, thanks. Good to see everyone.
Good to see you. All yours.
So this is our, um, I sent a letter to the, to the board, uh, the Guilford Savings Bank is donating the building at forty, the property at forty-four Boston Street to the Guilford Foundation, to retaining an easement over, uh, driveway and the area for the septic system and generator that's on the property. Back when the bank was doing its renovations and town center, uh, town hall south was being renovated, the town engineer the bank with regard to parking and driveway access through the municipal lot behind forty-four Boston Street, and that's the way that the bank exits traffic from the parking area. So one of the paragraphs in that agreement says that if the bank ever transfers assets, the town has the right to terminate the agreement, or if they change the use of the building. The foundation has used that space as its office for quite a while now, and we're just trying, the bank doesn't see any need for that space in the future, so they're making a donation to the foundation of that building. So I wanted to come to this board to just make sure that that transfer wouldn't trigger the town's step, stepping in and saying, well, we're gonna cancel the agreement, as you have the right to do, under the terms of the agreement, so that's why we're here.
Great. Um, in my mind's eye, there's no reason for us to terminate that, uh, that relationship, that, that, that arrangement, um, the.
Nothing's different for us.
Nothing, nothing changes for us. It stays the same. Um, parking can occasionally be, but the arrangement with the savings bank as a partner, uh, I think has worked fine. Uh, the great tenants of our parking space, um, I have no wishes of.
This agreement isn't about parking, this is about the access driveway.
It's access, and they have the right to use the parking if that's.
Oh, okay, but this one, do we have to rewrite that agreement then, or?
I don't think so. Just, uh, we wanted to come before this board to make sure that.
But we're gonna do something formally.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll have a motion to waive, uh, the right to, uh, to exercise that option.
At this time.
At the, right, and the agreement, the agreement remains in effect, it's just with regard to this transfer. We wanted to make sure that the town was.
Agreement now with foundation at this time. Maybe that's the change, though, Peter.
Peter, Peter just put his hand up, uh, and he would like to say something. Go ahead, Peter.
Right, uh, yeah, you can do this by motion if, uh, if G S B is comfortable with that, but I would, you know, basically be a little careful with it and just, uh, by vote, confirm that the town will not be exercising its right to terminate based upon the transfer of this particular location to the Guilford Foundation, and that all other, uh, terms of the agreement as amended shall remain intact and enforceable.
Does anybody wanna use those words as a motion?
Yes.
That's fine with us.
That's right. And a second, we have a second. Any further comments or questions? Uh, one comment, congratulations to the foundation for now having your own piece of property. But you guys have grown up fast.
We're very grateful to the bank.
I, we would be, so. All right, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici?
Yes.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You all. You don't wanna stay? You guys don't wanna stay for, uh, capital, uh, budget? Just cut it back.
I'll be back, I'll be back.
Thank you so much.
Incorporated. I don't, I don't, I wasn't sure with that.
Yeah, we're not, we're not on the board of directors anymore, but we still are corporators.
Uh, Pete? Pete, can you come on back?
Yes, uh, the question raised by, uh, Charles is, uh, he and Sandy are both on the Board of Incorporators, um, at, at the bank. Should they recuse?
I think he should, yes.
All right, so we note that the two recuse.
We'll recuse.
Yeah, thank you, Charles.
Good point.
Item eight. Consider to take possible action on award of bid number three dash twenty-four twenty-four. Consider take possible action on award of bid number three dash twenty four twenty five diesel fuel, number two meeting oil and gasoline, unleaded gasoline. Dark, are you gonna do this one or anything you wanna add to it?
Um, well.
Other than, other than it's a recommendation of both you and uh the Board of Education that we move forward with.
The number three option to um have the ability to lock in at a later time. We've never used this option before. So if the pricing goes down between now and June thirtieth, we can lock in and there's a. I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but in the documents that we gave you on board pack, there will be um. A slight upcharge, right, so for whatever it is, it's like thirty cents more per gallon. Um and then we can also lock in after July first, so say October comes and the rates go down. We can re um.
Cash.
Say the right words, so say we have, we say we budgeted fifty thousand gallons of fuel. And we've used ten, now they will redo our contract for the forty thousand gallons of fuel at the lower rate.
So we're, I may have misunderstood, so we're paying thirty cents a gallon for this option to have the right to lock in at the price drops?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, am I misunderstanding, the price isn't likely to drop thirty cents?
The the current, the current thinking is that prices are gonna drop uh based on the change in administration. Yes, and remember, this doesn't start until July of twenty twenty, July one of twenty twenty five.
Interesting, okay. And were there other bids? We only see Eastern River here.
Yeah, there there were, there was one other bid.
There was one other bid and their their option to lock in was.
Double what?
I feel like it was double, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And this is the first time where every ex wanting to do this option.
I believe so, yeah.
Interesting, and then the third, it was the third bid that. Just say we have the three.
Uh we solicited.
Solicited, that's what I'm.
And this was a form, this was a formal bid document, so we don't, we're not required to have uh more than one bidder. It's only on quote price quotes, if it's an actual bid.
Oh, whoever goes back.
Whoever comes back to us, yeah.
All right, I would appreciate in the future seeing everything.
Oh, sure, we can send that to you.
Okay, uh is there a motion to accept the uh um the pricing of the contract with East River Energy? For the comments or questions? Uh one of the other things uh we should recognize is East River Energy is a Guilford based.
Yes.
So, uh nice to do business uh with Guilford based businesses when we can and it's appropriate. Uh let me try your minds, second Federici?
Hi, and then I'm gonna have to log out for a few minutes.
That's fine.
Okay.
Um you have permission. Those in the room?
Hi.
All right, that motion carries, uh eight dot A. And this is uh. The discussion on the ordinance banning cannabis retail establishments in public hearing uh date of uh either December eleventh or eighteenth at seven thirty P M. With the community center, um. I think that we've gotten to this point, uh where we have agreed that uh we're gonna ban retail, uh at this point, Pete's got a document. Uh that has been shared uh that deals specifically with the retail sales, right? And we, I think the way we left it was all other firms, uh forms of commerce were gonna be okay. Uh so this is, you know, this is what we had heard most about, which is retail sales in 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 town, which. Probably would have been limited to one, um is, does anyone have an issue with either the eleventh or the eighteenth? Eighteenth is getting awful close to uh to the holiday.
It is, I'm not here on the eleven.
You're not here, so, okay.
Sorry, would you say those dates again?
Uh the uh eleventh or the eighteenth, can we uh possibly look at other dates?
Eve, this is an evening meeting, a town meeting.
It's a, yeah.
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 I'm okay with either one.
Public hearing, it's a public hearing.
Probably the eleventh is better.
But June's not.
Oh, you can't. I I can do the eighteen, that's up to you, I mean.
I can do the eighteen.
I appreciate that it's close to.
You can't, I don't like, that's fine.
I know. Yeah. I mean, it's close, but this is if, you know.
It's a full week away, right?
For a year.
Yeah. All right, let's set up for the.
So the document.
Pete, did the full document come out yet to, or Tracy?
That's gonna be in the evening.
Yes, seven thirty P M.
The draft ordinance, I, you know, I I just given it to you, Matt, I don't know if um.
I thought you had shared it with Tracy, you'll have it uh before before we're done today.
I I probably shouldn't have asked this question at an earlier meeting, but. We are still, we pushed out the final date of uh of all the other possible permutations of. Selling or producing or growing.
We're gonna allow those, we're we are prohibiting retail sales only at this point.
Right, so um maybe I misunderstood, I thought we were gonna um have one more discussion on those other. Options to decide whether we wanted them or not, but basically we were, we're going to allow those at this time.
I thought.
Tell me, I mean.
Okay.
Those required.
But at this point, if someone came interested in doing one of those other options other than retail, we have not forbidden it.
Uh it is currently forbidden through January thirty first, but um based on the ordinance, we. Once the ordinance went into effect, which is thirty days after we uh it gets approved. Um then those activities would be allowed uh by right, but as Charles said, but with your applicable.
With all the, okay. I guess I misunderstood, I thought we were gonna go through each one of those and discuss them, but. I'm not suggesting that we do, I just wanted to be clear in my mind.
Yeah, I I think we did decide to do that, but I personally, I don't feel the need to do it, but I think that is how we left. So I might be, if it, no, well, you might be.
All right, so.
Sticking to this.
But by the way, Matt, if I could just interject, the the draft I had forwarded to you would become effective. January one, and I think we can change that before I distribute it to everyone, we'll just change that to February one, since the moratorium is through. The thirty first of January.
The the draft you did before, Peter, that is on your board pack, it's at the the top.
Oh, okay.
Add to the agenda for the board members, it should be, it should be in there.
Okay, good.
Oh, thank you.
Right.
But 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 we'll make it, uh that's the one little change, I think, that would need to be made to it.
So yeah, just as a refresher, uh cannabis establishments uh include producer. Dispensary facility, which is what we're prohibiting, uh cultivator, micro cultivator, which is just a difference in how many square feet you have. Uh retailer, um hybrid retailer, um which we're prohibiting. Food and beverage manufacturer, product manufacturer, product packager and delivery service or transporter.
And I see the draft also prohibits use on town property.
Property, yes.
It's really important, so, good, thank you.
Enforcement is same is another challenge, but.
It is, it's not the public hearing, it can modify.
Absolutely, yes, we can.
This is what we're putting forward, remember how we.
Yeah.
Struggled with, you know, putting something in front of the electorate. Doesn't mean that this is what it is, I mean, that's the reason, that's why you have public hearings.
Yes.
Pete, just one question, um the prohibition on uh the on retail, uh would that extend to? Beverages?
There's um. Okay, uh I'll I'll share that with you, um there's a statute that came out. That made those infused beverages, they're basically going to piggyback off the um. Off the licensing of the retailers, so. That those retailers would be able to sell infused beverages, but only them. Um and I think the packet, the package stores have their own rules.
Right.
Um so.
I thi- I think we need that clarification on the uh on the package stores, cause I think we can prohibit uh infused beverages. I think we're, that's the only place where we're allowed to step on the state uh state licensing for package stores.
Yeah, all right, let me, let me check that, I I have a feeling that you're right, they had to, they basically had to sell off their existing stock, I think, in the spring. If I have, if I recall this correctly, and then um I I think they would have to become a. Uh a licensed retailer under this statute, but let me let me check that and I'll get back to you.
All right, so uh we're on for the eighteenth, that that works, all right.
Did we say seven or seven thirty?
Seven thirty, it doesn't matter, would you prefer seven?
Sure.
All right, so I'll put it in the calendar, I think. All right.
I actually, I I have to see if the room is available starting at seven, I didn't check that, there might be somebody in there previously. If it isn't, I'll put it at seven, if not, we may have to do seven thirty.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
You can let us know, okay, thank you.
I will.
I think officially we have to vote on that one, uh all in favor of the uh eighteenth at seven, if room is available, seven thirty if not.
Hi.
Uh that motion carries, thank you very much. Um all right, item nine, appointments and resignations, act on the resignation of Rita D'Atola from the Housing Authority. Is there a motion with appreciation and regret?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Second, uh let me try your minds, all in favor?
All right.
Hi, Lou, are you back?
Back again, yeah, I'm in favor.
Got it, thank you, that motion carries. Nine dot two, act on the recommendation to appoint Rita D'Atola to the Affordable Housing Commission for a term to expire on October thirty one twenty twenty six, is there a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
The reason that the these are in juxtaposition is that a member of the house, the Guilford Housing Authority. Cannot serve on any other board or commission in town. And Rita had uh expressed an interest.
She can't vote.
Right.
Yeah, she was gonna be the liaison, but now someone else is, but this is actually a a a. A good situation, the way it came up, because with Rita joining the commission, we now have a full. Uh what's that word, a full commission of ten people plus the first selection and or designated. And that she's unaffiliated, which is, that's what we needed, we needed anybody but a D. Um so we still then have one spot left, which is a second alternate. Who also has to be anybody but a D, but at least now we've got the full commission seated, which is very nice, or will be.
Um so we have a motion and a second, let me try your minds, second Federici?
Hi.
Uh those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries. On the heels of Rita's uh retirement uh resignation, uh Peter Palumbo has expressed interest in. Uh joining the uh rejoined the Guilford Housing Authority, Peter's been, Peter had served. For a number of years, uh actually had chaired for a good portion of it, um and uh I'd like to recommend that we appoint Peter Palumbo. Uh to get to the vacancy uh on the Guilford Housing Authority.
I'll second it.
Uh all right, any further comments or questions? So hearing done, let me try your minds, uh second Federici?
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi.
All right, that motion carries, uh item ten. Act on a request from the Christ Episcopal Church to place a sign on the green advertising, it's chili supper fundraiser taking place. December sixth twenty twenty four, is there a motion?
I'll make motion.
Uh second here, um that chili is always delicious. Uh let me try your minds, second Federici?
Yes.
Are those in the room?
Hi.
I could have some right now.
Maybe would you test it?
Food taster. Uh we're doing that purely out of public service to make sure it's okay. All right, uh item eleven, committee reports?
So next.
Uh I'd just like to remind everybody that the Affordable Housing Commission, along with the subgroup. Community conversations regarding housing is having um an informational um. Meeting at the Guilford Library this um Thursday, starting at. Wednesday, I'm sorry, this Wednesday, starting at seven o'clock, and it's uh obviously open to the public.
Great, thank you, Skip. Uh all right, um anything else on correspondence, old business, new business? Public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? I don't think anybody from the public is here. Um item sixteen, consider take possible action on potential land purchase and executive session will be required. Uh. So Lou, you gonna stay on this one? You okay?
I can, I'm gonna be switching over to my uh desktop in fifteen minutes, so. I'll listen as much as I can and then hopefully I'll be on the desktop when I uh comes around to the end of the session.
Great, all right, so we're gonna.
Let me suggest, there's actually a new. Subject that we might wanna spend a minute on and you might wanna keep John Trudis on for it.
Okay, um.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. You wanna do that first?
Yeah, do that first, then he can drop off and we can do the other one.
Okay. All right, um so we're not going into executive session quite yet.
Well, you, yeah, we we should do it in the executive.
Oh, you wanna do it, okay.
Do it in the executive session, but but ask John to stay.
Stay, oh, yeah. So we have a motion going to executive session.
Yeah, you know what, Matt, I'm gonna log off, when I get back to my desk, I'll log back in.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just gonna miss the beginning of this, but it's probably better.
You got it, all right, uh as we go into executive session, Gary, Kevin, and John Trudis, Peter, you're always welcome. Uh if you wanna stay, uh or make better use of your time elsewhere, that's fine, uh so. All in favor of going to executive session?
All right.
Bye.
Motion carries. Okay. All right, is 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 there a motion to come out of executive session? Second?
Second.
Uh in executive session, there are no motions made, no actions taken, but as a result of the conversations. Is there a motion to allow the land acquisition to disclose the appraisal uh to the property owner and enter into negotiations. With uh said property owner for the property that was discussed.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh any comments or questions?
Nope.
Uh let me try your minds, second Federici?
Hi.
Those in the room?
Hi.
Hi, that motion carries, uh I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and we'll take about a three minute health break uh before we get into.
Come over here.
Uh capital budget presentations, uh motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Not debatable, all in favor, signify by saying anything?
Hi.
All right.
Thank you very much.